Okay, good evening, everyone. We're gonna reconvene our open session. And I'd like to ask trustee Inman to take, uh, report out any actions taken in close session.
There are no actions to report.
Thank you for that. We'll now have the invocation led by trustee Milchker and the pledge of allegiance led by trustee Prendergast.
As we gather here tonight in this morning trustee meeting, we come together as a community united by shared vision and a profound sense of pride. Our colleges, Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College, stand as beacons of education, innovation, and excellence in our community, thanks to the incredible work of every one of you. Our outstanding reputation is not just a matter of pride, it's a testament to the dedication and tireless efforts of our professors, administrators, classified professionals, and trustees. Each day you bring your passion, expertise, and unwavering commitment to the betterment of our students. We are proud of the countless lives you've touched, the knowledges you have imparted, and the opportunities that you have created. Together you have helped shape the future of countless students. As we embark on this meeting's agenda, let us carry with us the spirit of unity, collaboration, and the shared purpose that has brought us this far. May our discussions be guided by a commitment to the well-being of our students. Thank you for your dedication, your unwavering support, and your relentless pursuit of excellence. Let us move together forward with the knowledge that we are part of something truly special, and together we will continue to reach new heights. Thank you.
Please join me in pledging to the flag of the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated.
Thank you both for that. Are there any requests for public comments? No requests for public comments. We'll now transition over to board reports. And I will start out with trustee Milchker.
Okay, my microphone is on now. During Flex Week, I had the opportunity to participate in IVC's Guided Pathways Lunch and Learn and Plan for Student Success. This was followed by a recent meeting that I also attended this, this, this month. At this event, the discussion was expertly led by Brandy Idelman, a dedicated librarian at IVC. Brandy led the discussion revolving around engaging students effectively. Professors shared valuable strategies for building belongings within our various careers and academic interest areas. Furthermore, completion teams shared their progress, all prepared for the upcoming event. So, board members, mark your calendars for Wednesday, September 20th, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. President Hernandez will deliver remarks at IVC, and students will have the opportunity to learn about academic and non-academic support available at IVC. Additionally, the habit truck will provide lunch. I also had the privilege of attending several Mars Rover meetings at Saddleback College, where I'm always oppressed by our incredibly dedicated students. I attended the First Responders Dinner in Anaheim, which was graced by the presence of our esteemed chancellor, our two chiefs of police, and the head of the paramedic program, and many other esteemed trustees. Lastly, I participated in an inaugural meeting of the Legislative Task Force, where Rancho Santiago Community College District has taken the role of chair for this upcoming year. This crucial meeting involved all four chancellors, all four trustees, and all four public information officers. That is, one representative from each of the four community college districts in Orange County. We received legislative updates from Rancho's lobbyists, and will collectively decide our focus for the years ahead legislatively. These events and engagements reflect our commitment to student success, community involvement, and advancing our institution's mission. So, thank you for your dedication and support, as we continue to make a positive impact on our students' lives. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Milchker. Trustee Jay is not able, was not able to be with us tonight, so I am going to read a report. So, this is a report for trustee Bobby J. "At the IVC Foundation Board of Governors Meeting on September 13th, I learned about Manufacturing Day in the Idea Building at ATEP, to be held on Friday, October 6th, 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. I'm excited about this event, with IVC expecting 150 high school students from their service area. Participants will gain an understanding of the many aspects of manufacturing and broaden their perspective on a variety of pathways leading to careers in manufacturing. The event includes hands-on demonstrations by instructors in the design model making and rapid prototyping, drafting technology, electrical electronic technology, and engineering programs. There will also be an IVC Industry and Resource Expo highlighting several programs for students, as well as an opportunity to connect with manufacturing companies providing information regarding careers in the manufacturing industry. Also, at the IVC Foundation Governors Meeting, I learned of the Second Annual Retiree Reunion held on September 8th. President Hernandez welcomed 45 retirees and provided them with an update on the college with a tour and luncheon following. Retirees were thrilled to be back on campus and to learn about all the terrific programs the college offers. One of the most exciting topics at the board meeting was learning about the IVC Foundation's Fourth Annual Giving Day, which is scheduled for Thursday, October 19th. All gifts made that day will receive a two-to-one match. For every $2 you contribute, the IVC Foundation will match with $1, up to a $500 match per account. I hope you will join me in helping the IVC Foundation reach their $70,000 Giving Day goal by making a donation to invest in the students and programs at IVC. And then finally, on September 15th, the Fine Arts Department at Saddleback College presented a program by the 1940s, '50s group, The Four Freshmen, which I attended. It was truly a fabulous program with uplifting music from that era played and sung by a highly talented group of performers. Both Saddlebacks and IVC's programs and performances for the community are outstanding, with a wide range of entertainment to meet the tastes of all of our community. I highly encourage you to support these events. Thank you." Trustee Redell.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I did attend the, what is it, the AB 125 mandatory harassment class? Actually, it was very, very good. It really was. If you ever have some free time, you'll learn a lot. So, I don't have anything more from the college, but I read and heard about a story this past week, and I just wanted to quickly tell you about it. It has to do with four students and a professor. And these four students decided to go out to a party this night and really play it up, and they were very, very late, but they had a test the next day. And so, on the way home, they thought, well, are we gonna tell the professor, you know? So, they decided that morning to roll around in the dirt, to look really dirty and stuff, and in that morning, they walked in, all four of them, to the professor's office and said, "Oh, you won't believe it, we got a flat tire last night, and we had to push the truck all the way back into campus. It was really hard." And she looked at them and thought about it, and she said, "Okay, I will let you retake the test in three days." So, they thought, wow, they really made it. And they came in, and she put all four of them in different rooms, and she went one by one to give them the test. And they saw that the test was two questions. The first question was one point, what is your name? The second question was 99 points, and it was, what tire was flat? When I read that, I thought, what a smart professor, teacher. It could be someone in classified who has people in their office that have those same kind of excuses, but what an ethical lesson that they learned about life. And I bet you those four students never forgot that test. That's it.
Thank you.
It was a short week, so, well, our meeting is early this month, and there wasn't a lot of things, but I also attended the harassment. And I am continually amazed at the quality of people that we have here. I shouldn't be, but these two women gave a presentation and a workshop that, that really, you know, I've done a lot of this kind of thing, and I thought, oh, I already know this, you know? But that's not true. I know a lot of it, but not all of it, so it was very good. Other than that, I have nothing. Thank you.
All right. I attended the, as the representative of the community colleges in our area, to the Orange County School Board Association meeting. We discussed the upcoming dinner meeting on October 18th, if you're planning on going to that. A couple, one of the guest speaker ideas that they had was to have somebody talk about the implications of AI in education, so that'll be an upcoming speaker for that, as well as they were talking about DEIA and implications of that as well. So, it is an interesting dynamic this year with that board, because the Orange County Department of Ed and a couple of other school boards, Orbelinda and some others, have opted to stop their membership in the California School Board Association, which the Orange County School Board Association is a subgroup of. So, there was discussion of, well, do they get to still be a part of this? And considering that it's run by staff at the Orange County Department of Ed, it was, it was, it was an elephant in the room, so we'll see. Stay tuned. Also attended the Orange County School Board Association, I'm sorry, the Orange County Business Council inaugural First Responders Dinner. Excellent presentations and stories. They had some people in tears and some of the stuff they were dealing with, cancer patients and this, that, and the other, and it was really, really well presented. And then, I just wanted to kind of follow up. We had a public speaker last meeting mentioning the Orange County Sustainability Project, Decathlon. We did get a pamphlet in the mail as trustees, but I'm hoping, my recollection from last time was that we were able to get a presentation, or like a day where we were able to kind of go, they had like a, maybe it was the kickoff day of the whole thing, where we had like VIP tickets and early access and things like that, so we were able to go before all the crowds. And I don't know if that's happening this year or not, and if somebody can look into that, but we were all kind of talking that we kind of, those of us who were a part of it last time really enjoyed it, and it was very valuable to see what the students were putting together, not only from our college, but from the other organizations that were there as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Deck.
All right, so, my board reports this month are fairly light. We've just started school again, as TJ can attest, so our time is limited now. But I was fortunate enough to attend the OCBC's inaugural First Responders Dinner, along with trustee Prendergast over here, and it was a really great event, and I want to give my congrats to our chancellor for being part of that organization and having that set up. Additionally, I would like to share that I'm also excited to be attending the Saddleback Foundation's annual gala on October 6th, so I'm looking forward to that in the next couple of weeks. But other than that, that is it for my board reports. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Since I already read trustee Jay's report, I'll, I'll try to just be brief. I agree that trustee Inman, the sexual harassment training was, you think you know all the do's and don'ts and trip falls, and every time I attend one, we learn something new, so that was, that was really great. Couple things, just for people to think about. This week is the United Nations General Assembly in New York, so if you want to get a sense of how world leaders, world leaders think of themselves in the world, try to, try to tune in. I think Brazil is kicking off the General Assembly, and then I think Biden follows, President Biden follows next. So, always an interesting state to hear how these, how the world thinks of itself, and oftentimes it's not congruent with what we think ourselves. So, I would recommend, you don't have to, I think it's, you know, all day, and if you remember a few years ago, I mean, there's no protocol, so, in terms of time, I mean, generally speaking, you're thinking 15, 20 minutes, but I think, what, it was 10 years ago, Muammar Gaddafi spoke for three hours at the UNGA. So, I think it's possible, and that could happen, so please try to tune in. And with that, student trustee Hitty.
Thank you. As fall semester continues and transfer season approaches, both Saddleback and IVC have organized more workshops to assist students in this often complicated process. These resources include UC Personal Insight Questions and Tag Application Workshops. As a student, I can attest that these workshops are constructive and informative at helping students through this often difficult time. I believe that alongside our amazing team of counselors, these programs will assist in increasing the rate of students who are able to successfully transfer and continue their education beyond Saddleback and IVC. I also had the pleasure of attending Saddleback's Hispanic Heritage Month Celebration in the quad to kick off Bobcat Days for the rest of the school year. The event was very successful, and I was grateful to see so many students returning to in-person activities. The IVC EOPS program has also confirmed that they are working on constructing their own clothing closet within their care center, and we will soon offer clothing resources at both Saddleback and IVC. I believe it is important for us to prioritize these resources as we continue to explore housing solutions. It is critical, critical for us to include these programs to ensure a more holistic approach that addresses a wide range of issues and creates longstanding solutions for many students. I look forward to both programs amplifying and extending their resources to assist more students in need. Thank you.
Thank you for that. And I forgot to say one thing. The state legislature adjourned last week on September 14th, so I assume we'll be hearing some kind of update the next board meeting on summary of the session and some of the bills that passed and were signed or vetoed into law that are impactful to us, so that would be helpful. Okay, that was Trinanda ASG and Spring Omenni from Saddleback College.
All right. Good evening, everyone. During the last few weeks, Associated Student Government at Saddleback has been extremely successful at recruiting and filling in majority of the open positions. All of our councils have already started planning events for the fall semester, such as the Club Rush, which is taking place on September 26th and the 27th. Our goal is to engage our students with our current active clubs. And as for our campus life, we're currently planning events for Latinx Heritage Month, Fall Festival, and Halloween Celebration, all which will take place within October 15th to November 15th timeframe. We are hosting a Veterans Resource Fair on the 26th of this month, and the Veteran Appreciation Football Game is taking place on November 6th. Our senate has already established its goals for our term. We will be focusing on ways that we can make our campus more accessible for students with disabilities, as well as hosting workshops featuring retired veteran students who will share their experience about the transition from being in the military to being a student at Saddleback College. We also will be sending out a survey to the student body in regards to our school's new mascot, and we will finalize our decision on the name of the mascot by October 3rd. And that's the end of my report. Thank you.
Can I ask a que, thank you for your report. Didn't we just rename the mascot?
Um, well, we were just told that-
Your mic.
So, we were just told that, we got requested to decide on a few new names and potentially send those out to the student body and see what they want to decide.
May I clarify?
Yeah, please.
They're talking about naming the mascot that actually wears the costume and walks around at the games.
You mean like Sylvia the Bobcat? Oh, I see. I mean, that's, well, it doesn't have to be a male, I mean, so, right? Thank you. All right. Okay, thank, thank you for that. I don't think you're Diego. Sorry. From IVC. ASG.
Thank you. Okay, hello, everyone. My name is Chloe Hahn, and I'm the ASIVC Executive Vice President. I'm here today instead of Diego Victoria, our president, because he couldn't be here, so I'm here on his behalf to deliver the report. So, starting off with our engagement, so the Associated Students of Irvine Valley College, along with our inter-club council and our Office of Student Life, hosted its semestral Club Day last week. So, Club Day is our large-scale Club Rush event in which students at IVC, both new and returning, are given the opportunity to learn about the different clubs we have on campus, to connect with our officers, and also to join these clubs. So, we had an unprecedented number of student organizations who had a booth at Club Day, which was over 50, and we were really thrilled to announce that over 700 students attended our in-person Club Day event. And the significant attendance speaks to our highly engaged student body, the increase in marketing and PR we've been doing, and also the plethora of student organization offerings we have on campus, so cultural, academic, and also interest groups, which are really representative of our super diverse student community. Moving into leadership, this year we've seen that we had really, really high interest in our ASIVC position, so there was a lot of students, both returning and new, with an interest in joining student government. We received over 70 applications for the judicial branch of our student government, and we're excited to announce that they were officially appointed and ratified by our senate last week. So, we're now beginning our senate election process, which has generated a lot of engagement throughout campus. And for our executive board, we've been meeting together and kind of generating our collective vision based on our shared goals for the semester. And then as for campus initiatives, on August 30th, the IVC campus community came together for our fall food distribution event. So, over 500 students on campus were given meals or groceries, and we're really excited to have both college and district volunteers support this large-scale event. And at this event, there was just this overwhelming atmosphere of care as we welcome both new and returning students, and across IVC, there's a lot of hope and excitement for the upcoming semester. Thank you all.
Thank you, and thank you both for being so well-prepared. I'll move on to the IVC Academic Senate. Rebecca Beck.
Thank you. Good evening. Two quick updates for you guys tonight. Primarily, I want to address one that's important, that's happening for us next week. And back in the summer, I mentioned that we are going to be granted a good amount of money through the IAPI grant. And part of the process of this is visits from a PR team. And the PRT means Partnership Resource. And so, their first visit is next Tuesday, September 26th, and they're gonna be with us from 8:00 a.m. until 5:00. And as they hang out on our campus, they're gonna meet with our students, which I'm very happy, because we want to hear their voices, our faculty, our classified professionals, our administrators, and also two of our vice chancellors, Vice Chancellor Rishvichul and Vice Chancellor Chris McDonald. So, we're looking forward to that visit, because primarily, they're going to be gathering info. They're going to be asking us questions about how they can best support us with our area of focus, and our area of focus is to create a sustainable vision of professional development that aligns to our strategic plan and is sustainable. So, that is gonna be happening on Tuesday. And the second update that I have is I am excited that Margot and I have been communicating and thinking about how we can facilitate discussions around AI on our campuses, because we need to begin thinking about how AI is going to affect our workspaces, but most importantly, the ways in which we teach and our students learn. I think facilitating these discussions initially is to hear our colleagues, because we have to have the space for our colleagues who may be a little bit hesitant to embrace it. And I think creating that space would allow us to move forward and continue to create the workshops as I want, as I'm envisioning, but also learning opportunities for both our students and our faculty. So, thank you.
Thank you for that. What really, what an important area to focus on. Thank you for that. Saddleback College Academic Senate. Margot Lovett.
Good evening, trustees. Chancellor Barnes. Yeah, let me follow on from what Rebecca just said about the impact of AI. We at Saddleback also are planning professional development around how to use AI in the classroom and to address the impact on classroom instruction. And one of the things that we want to do is move past this dichotomy of either you embrace AI or you're a dinosaur, because we understand that there are, the decision whether or not to use AI will depend almost entirely on the goal of a particular assignment, right? What do you want students to get out of this activity? And for some, AI may be absolutely worthwhile, and for others, it may completely undermine the whole purpose of the assignment. So, that is something that we are working on. And if I can speak for President Stern, you know, we are also, the college is planning, President Stern is planning a town hall that will address some of these issues, but also the impact of AI on unemployment. So, there may be certain areas like, the programs that we currently have that may become obsolete because of AI, and those are things that we need to be cognizant of. So, that's one thing. The second thing that the Academic Senate is doing is we are paying close attention to legislation that either has been passed or is proposed that, you know, as you said, President Jamal, of things that have an impact on us. So, one really important piece of legislation that just passed is AB 811, and it was sponsored by Mike Fong. And what that does is it makes the, gives students who successfully passed a class the ability to repeat it, right? So, this was something that we had been allowed to do for many, many years, and some years ago, the legislature said absolutely not, and this is for credit classes. So, now there are, under certain circumstances, for certain classes, students can repeat a class for which they received a success, a passing grade. So, those things are on our radar, and we will give you further updates as the semester goes on.
Thank you for that report. Faculty Association, Robert Melendez.
Hello, and good evening. I do want to reiterate, a couple of the speakers already brought up how the events and even Club Day and some of the other kind of things that are happening on campus are very well-attended. I think the faculty and the whole college, each college and the district as a whole, really feels more vibrant when we have the students on campus and everyone is kind of involved there. To that point, we are also deep into the first part of the semester here, and we have our faculty there imparting new innovative approaches to pedagogy. They're also, of course, looking at the DEIA efforts in which they've done, and even approaches they are taking in the classroom to try to support learning across the campuses and also to all of our students. And I noticed that on this board agenda and a couple of board agendas, it seems like it's almost on every board agenda, there's something with dual enrollment. And I think it would be good to kind of really point out that faculty have been a big part of that, and really putting together courses, even programs and certificates that students are completing at our local high schools. And the only other thing I want to bring up on that is to make sure that we look at working conditions and support for our faculty to make sure they can do what they do best, which is impart that knowledge. Thank you.
Thank you for that update. Let's turn now to the IVC Classified Senate. Ace.
Good evening, everyone.
Kagiwa, right?
Kagiwa. I know, it's a very difficult last name.
Okay, sorry.
So, we just finished voting on amending our bylaws for classified senates. We're in the process of adding the Vice President of Equity. We don't, we haven't released the results yet, but we will be releasing that tomorrow at our next General Assembly. Our amazing fundraising team headed by Beverly Hill recently held an Angels Game fundraiser for classified senate, and we collected over $1,100 worth of contributions that will be used for classified senate funds and our classified senate endowment fund that will be used for student scholarships. Our caring campus work group, primarily composed of classified professionals, recently collaborated with our Veteran Services Center and Student Life to host a blood drive that was last September 11th, Day of Service and Remembrance, and we had over 78 blood donors, and the blood collected will be used for the local Level 1 Trauma Center. Our past president, Desiree Ortiz, and Marcela Reyes will be representing us and presenting at the Strengthening Student Success Conference this coming October, and will be presenting on DEIA and how caring campus has been collaborating with Guided Pathways at IVC and showcasing how that has been a very successful at IVC. And we are now currently organizing the upcoming First Gen Day celebration at IVC. More details to come, and I'll provide those once they become available. Thank you.
Thank you for that report. Saddleback College Classified Senate. You're not Shantel.
Yes.
You are Shantel. Okay, good. Welcome.
Good evening, trustees and Chancellor Barnes. For those of you that may not know me, my name is Shantel Gill, and I am the new Classified Senate President for the academic year. My journey actually started at Saddleback College over 10 years ago. As a first-generation college student who luckily found my way here, later the honors program by the sheer recommendation of one of my professors, later joined ASG, and luckily, right before transferring to UC Irvine, was granted the opportunity to work for the college in a various, in various roles. So, I've been very grateful to now serve and extended learning and also be the new Classified Senate President. It's been a long 10 years, as you can tell. So, since- So since many of you may not hear the words "thank you" enough, I want to start by expressing my thanks to the district. And I say "district" because I also did take classes at IVC as a student, for all of your hard work and continuous support of our students, especially first-generation students who, like me, may have been lost without the caring support found on our campuses. So thank you. I want to formally thank Michelle McDougall Jackson, our past Classified Senate President, that is now a manager. Congrats, Michelle, for being our fearlessly, amazingly kind leader and stepping in to help us reconvene our Classified Senate group at Saddleback College this past academic year. I hope to represent our classified group as half as elegantly as she did. And I'm looking forward to supporting our group and bringing this year's goals into fruition. In highlighting the work that is currently taking place at Saddleback College, we are currently planning our Second Annual First Gen Day to celebrate our first-generation college students in November. Have officially kicked off our Caring Campus Goals, including welcome activities that were held last month. Are currently amending our bylaws to add a president-elect position to create sustainability for future leaders of Classified Senate. And we look forward to continuing to cultivate an environment for our students and employees that embodies our Caring Campus slogan, "Saddleback Cares." Thank you all, and I'm looking forward to another wonderful academic year with you all.
Thank you. Michelle was and is fantastic. And I'm sure you will well-represent the classified staff going forward. Now, I guess last but not least, CSEA Scott Green.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, trustees. Good evening, Dr. Barnes. Now that the academic year has begun and the school year has begun, we, at CSEA statewide, we are accelerating our programs to find future leaders with a new generation. We think that that's very important. And so throughout the next few months, we will have programs that will be available for all those that are going to participate and be our future leaders of our union. As we get closer and closer to Thanksgiving, CSEA has a target date. They are working with charitable organizations to raise funds for the homeless and also to raise funds for those who also need to be fed and have nice meals. I personally will be working with the Union Rescue Mission in which we raise money for meals for the homeless. And we also entertain underprivileged children, which includes reading books about climate change and many issues in which they can understand on that level. So we're looking forward to that.
Thank you for that report. I didn't mean to preempt the POA, but I don't believe someone is here to speak for the POA, correct? Okay. Now, moving on to 4.10, Board Requests for Reports. Do we have any?
Yes, I have one request.
We do. Trustee Milczek.
This is a quick request. I'd like a report on our district's emergency operation plan as outlined in Board Policy 3505, which is on our agenda this evening for a review and study. Okay? Do you want me to elaborate that, or that couldn't help? Thank you so much. Thank you.
Was the proper paperwork filled out that we're supposed to complete?
I don't think so.
Yeah, I mean, it sounds fine. I think we had a process in place where we're supposed to complete some paperwork. But it's not, I'm sure you'll do it.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I'll do it.
So then the, I guess it would come back next month for formal request?
I'll come back and I'll fill out the paperwork. Okay, thanks. It's on our agenda for a review and study. And some interesting points are brought up in that agenda item. So I want to make sure we're doing all that.
The policy, not the plan.
No, the policy. Yeah, the board policy, right. That's on our agenda for review and study tonight.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Okay. Any other requests? Seeing none, we'll go on to Public Hearings, 5.1. So we are now at Board Agenda Item 5.1, Regarding a Public Hearing on the District's Initial Proposal to the South Orange County Community College District, California School Employees Association. Before we hold the public hearing, Vice Chancellor Cindy Viscachill will provide an introduction.
Good evening. The board will conduct a public hearing to provide an opportunity for the public to comment on the district's initial proposal to the California School Employees Association. If the board has any questions throughout the public hearing process, I'm here to assist.
Does the board have any questions for staff to assist with their understanding of this matter? Board Item 5.1, the public hearing on the matter at hand is now open. Public comments are not to exceed two minutes. Okay? Public hearing is now closed. Is there any further discussion on this matter by the Board of Trustees? Seeing none, Item 5.1 is concluded. We will now move on to Item 5.2, Adoption of District Initial Proposal to the South Orange County Community College District, California School Employees Association. So moved. There's a motion from Trustee Prendergast.
Second.
Second from Trustee Rydel. Any questions? Okay, let's vote on the item. Item is approved on a unanimous seven-to-zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. Now we're on to Resolution 6.1. I'll turn it over to our clerk, Trustee Inman, for Item 6.1.
Thank you. We have three resolutions on the agenda this month for approval. The first resolution we are approving tonight is Item 6.1, Suicide Prevention Week. Be it resolved that the South Orange County Community College District Board of Trustees declare the week of September 10 through September 16, 2023, as Suicide Prevention Week in the South Orange County Community College District, and that all employees and students raise awareness through various initiatives, events, or programs. Can we have a motion?
So move.
And a second? Did I hear?
You had a motion from Trustee Milczek and a second from Trustee Rydel.
Okay, thank you. Lift a vote.
Yeah. Third, 6.1 is approved with a unanimous trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. Now we're on to 6.2.
The second resolution being brought forth for approval is Item 6.2, Hispanic Latinx Heritage Month. Be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the South Orange County Community College District hereby declares September 15 through October 15 as Hispanic Latinx Heritage Month and encourages all students, staff, faculty, and members of the public to honor the transformative contributions that have been made to our community. May we have a motion?
So move.
Okay, vote, please.
6.2 carries on a unanimous seven-to-zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. Now we're on to 6.3.
The third and final resolution is Item 6.3, Undocumented Student Action Week. Be it resolved that the South Orange County Community College District declares October 16 to the 20th, 2023, and every third week of October thereafter as Undocumented Student Action Week to work in partnership with other organizations, the California Community Colleges and the Community College League of California to engage in activities supporting undocumented students. A motion, please.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Time to vote.
Motion carries on a seven-to-zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. Now on to Board Item 7.0, 7.1, Biennial Ethics Training, involving the chancellor and trustee travel, trustee compensation, and just all-around transparency in the district. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Trustee Prendergast, was that you?
Yes, second.
Second from Trustee Milczek. Are there any questions? Okay, let's vote on the item. The motion carries on a seven-to-zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. Now on to 7.2, Board Policy Revision for Review and Study. Do we have a motion?
I move to review and study, and I have some questions.
Okay. The motion, Trustee Prendergast, to review and study, is there a second?
I second it.
Second from Trustee Milczek or Trustee Prendergast?
Yeah. First, I just want to thank the committee that worked on this. This is quite a lot that you took on. I do have a couple of items that are a few that I wanted to look at. If we can go to BP 2423, which is Chancellor Succession. Section 2, Interim Chancellor. In thinking about this, you know, we've, so many times we have things like, we have numbers and we wonder where the, what the intent is and where it came from. So it says, "Appointment of an interim chancellor may not exceed two years." And I'm curious what the intent of that length of time is intended to cover. So when I thought about it, I thought maybe it was something to do with the election cycle. That if, if we as a board appoint someone as chancellor, is it fair, if a new structure of board comes in at the next election, that they would be, you know, having to be dealing with that chancellor? Or is it something to do with giving the new board that comes in the opportunity to select the next chancellor? So I just was curious about that timeline and if maybe there was better language that, that addressed that, like, you know, up to, you know, if needed, more than six months up to the next board organization or something. I don't know. It just seemed like an arbitrary number of two years.
We have an answer.
Okay.
It's in Title V. It's part of the regulations where for any academic administrative position, you're only allowed to fill it interim for two years, no more than two years. And the purpose is after that, you have to go out and do a full recruitment. But it allows the board to fill something for two years, so.
Is there any benefit to waiting two years to fill it?
It depends on the circumstance. Every district has different situations where they might fill an administrative position for a year. Like during COVID, we had a very difficult time filling positions. So you saw two-year interims across the, across the state. However, it's really important that this ed code, I think, was written to trigger an open and competitive recruitment. You can't just put someone in a seat without an open and competitive recruitment. So that's why there's a term limit on an interim. And then you have to, before that two years is up, you have to have started your recruitment and hired that position.
Okay. Thank you.
That's a good question. I remember when, we've dealt with these issues, these issues before in our district. I think before the two of you came on, when we did have interims. And that issue did came up of whether they could stay up to two years. Then the interesting thing, the question came up, acting. I don't believe an acting, is that also in the ed code?
So the acting terminology means someone is currently on contract in that position and just unable to fulfill the remainder of that term, but they're contracted for the term. So it's acting until the term of the contract ends, and then it's interim.
And so I'm trying to remember now. Acting, for some reason, I don't think it has a timeline. Or is it 90 days? Or is, there's no?
So acting, it, let's say, for example, the individual is...
Because we've had actings here.
Yeah, no, let's say for the individual is experiencing a medical, a serious medical issue. So you could have an acting for the term of the medical issue. At some point, however, that contract, because a contract is only good until the contract ends, and then that person would have to either be physically able to continue that position or the contract would end and the district would open recruitment.
Okay. Thank you for that. Any other questions?
Yeah. On 3505, Trustee Milczek referenced this one a little bit earlier, but I kind of wanted to go a little more from the First Responders Dinner. One of the things that we discussed, Trustee Milczek and I, I think, are the only ones on the board that went through this. But many years ago, we went through a CERT training, a Community Emergency Response Team. And when I mentioned it to the two chiefs, they were like, oh, yeah, we need to redo that because it's been several years. When I mentioned it to the IVC chief, I said, yeah, it was, we got a, we did a tour of the trailer that was your dispatch. And they're like, we haven't had a trailer in years. So it has been a while. But we, as elected officials, were part of that CERT training. Again, I don't remember how long it was ago. I still have the emergency kit in my, in the drawer in my office. But it is something I think we might want to revisit. And I mentioned it to the chancellor, but I just wanted to highlight that since we are talking about our emergency operations plan. It's colleges who are also a larger, a member of a larger community that we really should be prepared for in, in need. So that was that. Board Policy 5020. I want to commend the board or the committee and those involved with putting our money where our mouth is on DACA and actually having a policy that, that it recognizes that. I do, however, have a question. In our disaggregation of data and our numbers, do we, would we count a student that was getting that waiver as a, as a... Just lost the term.
FTS?
Where's, where's my, I have it written down somewhere. Where is it? Ah, I lost it. Out-of-state. Would they be considered an out-of-state student with the numbers, just with a waiver? Or would they be considered an in-state student? I mean, they're, they're qualifying as a, a, I mean, we're, we're calling a non-resident student tuition waiver. So do they go in our numbers as a non-resident student in our, in our data? Or do they just then become an in-resident student because we're recognizing that they are here, they have attended high school? Or did I just open a can of worms?
So I, I believe, so the policy that you're referring to is the non-resident tuition, which includes out-of-state, you know, and others who aren't part of California. But with the DACA, it's my understanding, we could do some follow-up. It's, they would be counted as resident?
Okay.
Students, right?
I'm, okay, I'm just curious.
Well, in terms of the fees, right?
Well, in terms of fees, they're not charged, they're exempted from the non-resident fees. But as far as disaggregating the data, which I think was your question, they're considered non-resident.
Okay. Okay, so I was just, he was referring to the non-resident tuition policy, so.
Right. I was referring to how I'm glad that we're doing this and we have it written in the policy. But I was just curious about how they are represented in data. That was it. So you answered that. Thank you. And then the last one, 6,200. Find it. It's the budget. Man, or?
It's on page 28.
Yeah, it just takes me a while to get there this way. There it is. Budget Preparation. Part B that you added, to me, the language is a little clunky. Where it says, "Assumptions upon which the budget is based are presented to the board for review." And I'm almost wondering if that should say, "Assumptions upon which the budget is..." Is it "is" or "are"? "Assumptions upon which the budgets are based will be presented to the board for, not for review, but for understanding." Every time we get a budget presentation, they go over the process. But it's not like we're reviewing that process. We're getting it to, as a reminder. So it just, it just seemed clunky to me on the way it was written. And I'm not in any way a wordsmith. So maybe somebody else can do that before we approve it. But I just made, was wondering.
So we do bring, in January, we bring the assumptions to the board, and that's an action item that you guys do approve. But we can definitely change that wording.
Okay.
Who's on the, who's on the subcommittee now? It's Caroline and Ryan, right?
And Barbara.
Okay, cool. All right, anything else?
I mean, they had a lot of them to go through. So I could see how they would get to this point and be like, I don't know, yeah, yeah, move on. But I just, as reading through it, it just seemed a little clunky.
Okay, noted. She's taking notes. I can see that.
And that is all I have.
Okay. Any other questions on the, you do, Trustee Milczek?
Just interesting to read that it's actually in the board policy how much it costs to name the different portions of the facilities and how much the donations have to be for each portion. I didn't know if that was a little bit too specific for a board policy. And it should be in the academic regulations, you know. But anyway, it's in there, and it's interesting.
You mean the administrative?
Administrative regs, that's what I meant, sorry.
Right. So this is something that we're working with both of the executive directors of the foundation on is to further review and clarify those thresholds. So probably next year, we will bring, be bringing something back to the board. Will we remove all the dollar amounts from the policy and put it in administrative regulations?
Yeah, that's what I thought we were planning and doing for most things. But, but it's interesting to read now, so thank, thank you.
Okay. I think, having seen, I think we have all the questions. So we have a motion in a second. Okay. I think, having seen, I think we have all the questions, so we have a motion in a second. And let's go ahead and vote on the item. Okay, we got it. Uh, 7.2 is approved on a seven to zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. We, do you have a question?
Well, I think it's six to zero. There aren't seven of us here this evening.
Ah, you're right. I'm misspeaking. It is a six to zero, correction noted. It shows me seven, but that includes student trustee whose vote we like. But for purposes of approving the items, uh, it's the six of us. And so it's six to zero trustee yes vote with a student trustee yes vote. Thank you. Good catch. All right, now we're, we don't have any presentations or discussion items. And we're now on to the consent calendar. And as usual, are, does anyone have any pulls they'd like? Any items they want to pull? No? Good job on the administration part. So is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So move.
Motion from Trustee Milchker.
Second?
Second from Trustee Dak. Any questions? All right, let's vote on the item.
Actually, it won't dissuade the vote, but I do have a queer question on the disposal of, of things. Do you guys put that out to any of the K through 12 districts to see if they have any need for some of that stuff? Are we allowed to do that? Because I, we were driving by IVC the other day and there were a whole bunch of tables and chairs sitting on the parking lot that they looked like they were getting rid of. My wife's like, Science Lab could use that. And so I'm just curious if they, if they reach out to any other institutions, see if they have a need before it's just disposed of.
We do advertise that we're going to be doing an auction. Um, we typically don't send anything out to all the local districts. I mean, we, I guess we could, if you want us to. We're not required to. But we do do the advertisement that we're having a public auction.
Scary, because it'd be repurposed sometimes.
Okay. If you haven't voted, please vote on the item. Okay, the motion carries on a six to zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. All right, uh, we're now on to Business Services, 10.0. And 10.1, Salabac College Resolution 2311, approving intention to lease school property not needed for school classroom building.
I, I have one question on that.
Is there a question? Yeah, well, why don't, oh, go ahead. Turn on your mic.
I'd like someone to explain it because it, it looks like, um, they're repurposing the ATAS building and they're moving out of the old, um, Student Services Building. And it got a little confusing. And I know at one point, we were going to demo the ATAS building because we thought it was unsafe. So I just, probably shouldn't have said that.
Yeah.
I just wanted a little explanation on this. Thank you so much.
Trustee, I mean, Vice Chancellor Gable?
Yeah, so it, it's the, the Technology Applied Science Building, the, the TAS building. Or I would say, um, a lot of times, we're saying OTAS because now we're saying, we're saying the old, the old Technology Applied Science Building. Um, so it's that building that we are interested in leasing out. Um, we had initially, when we built ATAS, so the new building that opened up and moved everybody out of there, we had initially, we were going to refurbish, uh, the TAS building and put the Police Department, um, Information Technology over there, some of our emeritus programs and reprographics. And we had done a application to the state for state funding. As the years have gone on, I would say the needs of the campus have changed. And, um, with the Gateway Building that's about to open and with the college addressing its needs, they have looked at the Student Services Building that is going to have a lot of vacancies once the Gateway Building opens up. And so we had hired an architect to look at repurposing the Student Services Center or the SSC Building, um, to see if all the programs would fit in there. Most of the programs will fit in SSC based upon the architect's reprogramming and working with the college programs. And so then the question was, do we have a need for the TAS building? And the decision was made that we don't. We were also approached, um, by an interested party of wanting to lease the building, um, for purposes of running a charter public school there. And we've had discussions with that. And so I think that is kind of where we're going with the interest of trying to lease the building, um, for a public charter school in here. But in accordance with, uh, government code and education code, we have to go through this lease and bid process. We can't just enter directly into a lease with one entity without going through the bidding process. So this resolution is the first step in that. And once the board, if the board so desires to pass this resolution, then we will go out to bid, um, with the bids being due in mid-November and then hope to be, bring a recommendation to the board at the December meeting.
Yeah, I remember talking about it a little bit, but I, I, I think this is really helpful. So do we have to, um, do any work on the old, uh, the, the building, the, the, the new ATAS building? I think the old building was called ATAS for many years, so that's why I keep going back to that name. Um, the names were changed, but, but thank you. So do we have to do a lot of repurposing to that building before we lease it out?
No, we will be leasing the building as-is. And so it will be, um, the, the tenant's responsibility to do all the leasehold tenant improvements that are required for the building and bringing the building up to code. If it is a chartered, um, public, if it's a, a public school that is chartered, chartered public school, then they will be required to bring it up to DSA standards.
It's a higher standard. Okay, okay, well, thank you. Thank you.
I'm going to go ahead and move the item.
Let's have motion from Trustee Prendergast. And is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second from Trustee Milchker, and I think a question from Trustee Rydell. Oh, and Trustee Edman. And Trustee Dak, so, Trustee Rydell, go.
Okay, um, I'm having a problem with this. Um, because several people have contacted me and say, is this really true? And I'm thinking, you said our needs have changed now. What if our needs change in 10 to 20 years? We don't know. And have, that's one question. Question two is, have we looked at other colleges who have done this? Who have leased portions of their campus buildings or whatever to other entities of this nature? Question three, parking. Um, it's a nightmare. So I have three questions.
I'll, I'll try those, Vice Chancellor Gable. Uh, so first, um, there are other schools with, uh, high schools on their campuses. I actually came from one. Um, they are very successful in making sure that a higher-than-normal percentage of high school students go onto college as a result of those students being on a college campus. Those students often get to take college classes as part of their high school credits. And at my previous college, every high school graduate that graduated with their diploma also graduated with an associate's degree. So imagine finishing high school and being ready to transfer to a university as a standing junior. Huge advantage, so very good for them. Um, in terms of other questions, Trustee Rydell, um, parking, let's start at the bottom. Um, we do very careful parking analysis and we're very careful, uh, that we have sufficient parking. Whenever we have excess capacity, as you know from agreements that you have approved, uh, we work with, uh, an Amazon, uh, partner to make sure that we're collecting revenue for any excess capacity that we have. And we're always ready, um, and nimble in being able to get out of that contract if we ever have additional parking needs. But whoever rents that building would be limited to the parking that's on-site. They would not be using any parking on campus. And we don't currently depend on the parking in the parking lot that is part of the TAS building. And I think there was one more part of your question, uh.
Needs.
Your needs changing?
Uh, needs changing for the building. Great question. Um, you know, we never would have anticipated having fewer needs today than we did, uh, four years ago when we assumed we would be renovating that building. But the pandemic changed things. At that time, we were 70% on-ground and 30% online, a leader in the state in online education. Today, we're closer to 50/50, and we think we will land at about 60/40. So about 60% of our students on-ground. Uh, with that, we know that we have, um, all of the needs met in terms of educational buildings in the current facilities master plan. And we believe we can fit, as Vice Chancellor Gable said, the existing support services into a renovated SSC, our Student Service Center, um, and other buildings on campus with a couple of minor exceptions, uh, where we could find some outbuildings for them. But we don't, we no longer need the TAS. Um, you and others have rightly asked us from the DIAS whether we are overbuilding, whether we are looking at our future post-pandemic and being realistic about our needs, and we're doing exactly that. While we may have needed that building four years ago, we believe we can get by without it today. And we think the best and highest use might be to have a high school on our campus to serve those students and to create a robust dual agreement, uh, agreement with that entity.
Okay, going ahead then, how many students have they anticipated and said at any, let's say, when they are full capacity, how many students will be in that building?
So, so far, we've only talked to one potential, uh, lessor. Um, and they are talking about a maximum capacity of, I believe, somewhere in the neighborhood of 400 to 500 students.
You good? Any other questions? No? Okay. Trustee Edman.
Okay, I have several questions. I'll just read them all, I guess, and then you can. Okay, first of all, as the people at this end of the, uh, DIAS know, there are certain responsibilities that people who teach K-12 have, the loco parentis thing and mandated reporting. Does, do these kinds of things extend to high school students on a campus that are young? But they're being taught by our teachers? No, but some of them would be. They said they could take other classes.
Do you mean, do those obligations move, move to us?
Yes.
No. So we're responsible for students taking our classes in our buildings. We, to the best of my knowledge, uh, do not share all the responsibility of the K-12 provider.
Okay. I would have guessed that, but I just wanted to ask. My second question is the one, I have four of them, but my second question is the one that I'm the most concerned about. Um, I'm concerned about the whole improvement of the property. It's hard for me to picture that we're going to take this building and we're going to say, here, you're the tenant, now you get it fixed. I wonder, for instance, if this, I, I know it has, I read the thing three times because I thought this was very interesting. But it's, I know it's as-is. I know they have to be, uh, make code and state approvals and things like that. But, um, are there rules, procedures, um, to make sure that, for instance, the quality of the building is not subpar? Uh, that the quality meets the same standards as we would expect if we were doing, doing renovation?
I'm going to ask Vice Chancellor Gable to take that one.
Yes, so if it, like I said, if it is a chartered public school, they are required to design their buildings to Title 24 DSA standards, just like we are. So it would be the same standards that we would be required to do if we renovated the building.
Okay, I did read about the district representative, or I'm not su, I don't, someone in the district was in, would be in charge of them. Now, if there are some kind of conflicts, who has the power in that situation? The tenant or the district person in charge of that, sort of in charge of that program?
When you say conflicts, what, what do you mean by conflicts?
Conflicts in, uh, design or materials being used or work, people.
So that would, um, the district would have cursory approval and we wouldn't be able to withstand or, you know, withhold approval unnecessarily. So they would be required to build it and to renovate it so that it had the same look and feel of other buildings on this campus. Um, and as long as it did that, then we wouldn't be able to unnecessarily withhold approval of the design.
Okay. Um, my next one is, um, really kind of goes along with Trustee Rydell. If, what, what I had written was, if they turn out to be an undesirable tenant for some reason, okay, can we get rid of them? Or do they have the 75 years because of the contract?
Depending upon what you mean by undesirable tenant, we typically do have out clauses in our ground leases that would allow us to terminate the lease for certain measures. Those haven't been spelled out yet, but they would be spelled out within the ground lease. So if they don't meet their financial obligations, let's say, that would be something that we would be able to terminate the lease if they're not meeting their financial obligations.
Okay. Um, is there a, in the school, the colleges that have done this, I understand if the charter school would be sued for some reason. I understand that part. How about, um, the uni, the college and the district as being deep pockets? For a quest, uh, for a problem that someone has with the school, with the tenant?
I, I'm not a lawyer in that field, and we might want to get additional legal opinions to, to answer that question in more detail. Um, but the obligation that we would have would be a landlord's obligation, a lessor's obligation. So unless the negligence, um, that formed a basis for a lawsuit involved our maintenance of land around them or issues that involve landlord tenancy, I really don't see how we would be a deep pocket, Vice Chancellor Gable?
Correct. And, and again, that would be a term within the ground lease where we would require that they maintain a sufficient level of insurance. And typically, they indemnify the district as well within the ground lease for anything that, you know, we're not negligent in doing ourselves.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for that. I think Trustee Dak had a question or two.
Uh, I have quite a few, actually. Um, so, uh, I believe it was President Stern said that the school in question that has been in negotiations expects to have 400 students. Uh, how many do they currently have enrolled at their current site?
I believe it is 80. Um, and, and I do want to correct one thing. If I said in negotiations, I want to correct that. There have been no ongoing negotiations, um, prior to releasing a, a request for proposals. There's been a discussion, uh, with one potential tenant down the road.
Okay, thank you. And so they expect to expand their enrollment by, uh, quite a bit, right? Um, you know, four times as much or more. Um, and I know that charters get their funding based on enrollment. And going through the 2020 master plan, uh, it looks like the TAS renovation costs would amount to around $21 million. Um, do we expect our tenant to be able to afford that with 80 enrolled currently?
I do not know, uh, the business model for charter schools well enough, but I do know, um, that there is fundraising for charters, uh, for capital improvements that may be separate from the revenue they generate for their annual, annual operating expenses. That is to say, they need to generate enough in their allocation to keep up and maintain their site. But they can raise through fundraising efforts enough for big capital improvement projects. And my assumption, Trustee Dak, in, in all of those discussions with just that one prospective tenant, was that that fundraising would not be generating capital improvements from the ongoing revenue, but rather from a, a specific fundraising effort.
Okay.
But also, as, as part of the bid process, um, the district would be doing its due diligence on any entity that submitted a bid. Part of submitting the bid would be submitting the financial information that shows that they have the means in order to complete the project. So if we had a bidder who doesn't show that they have the financial means, that would be, um, one of the things that we would be evaluating when we are looking at the bid results and making a recommendation on who to award the bid to.
All right, thank you. I, I guess I have another question. Uh, in the resolution, it does note, uh, $155,000 lease or down payment or deposit on that. And, but nowhere in this, um, uh, resolution doesn't note the required, um, I guess, resources to renovate. And I just wanted to know if there was a reason it wasn't in there. Say we have another prospective person who might not have been engaging in discussions. Say we have another prospective person who might not have been engaging in discussions, and they maybe don't do their due diligence, and we have to go and restart the whole process. I was just kind of curious why there was no cost attached to potential renovations required.
Because it's really up to each individual bidder to determine what modifications they would want or tenant improvements they would want to make. And so, you know, it could vary greatly on what the cost would be. So what we put in our resolution are the items that are required legally in accordance with government code if we're going to lease property, and so that's what we have in, in this resolution.
Is, thank you for that response. I guess I would add an additional thing on there. Is there, because I know that we've looked at the master plan in 2020, is there a range of what the costs would be? Twenty-one million was what the district was planning, but that's before inflation. So do we know what the estimated minimum cost would be to get it up to code at this point?
I do not. I mean, that, the estimate that we had on our master plan was the estimate at that point in time. If you look at escalations of what's occurred since then, you know, some projects have gone up fifty percent, others have been thirty percent, so it just really varies and depends. It's going to be a significant chunk of change in order to renovate the building.
Okay, thank you. So it could go up to, if it's fifty percent more, then we've got to around thirty million?
Potentially.
Potentially, okay, thank you. Additionally, it's, appears that TAS programs are currently housed at the Student Services Center, and that there is going to be modifications to the Student Services Center to accommodate these programs. But I noted, I did note that there were a number that were not going to be housed there. Are they in temporary facilities? I'm curious what that future might look like at this point.
Sure. None of the former, none of the programs that were formerly housed in the TAS building are in SSC and the Student Service Center building. They either went to the new task building, ATAS building, or they're currently in portables. And one of them in particular, actually a couple of them, will be going out to Tustin, to ATEP. So culinary and automotive are both going out to Tustin. Automotive was once in the ATAS facility, currently in the OTAS facility, forgive me. It is currently elsewhere on our campus in a separate standalone building, and it will eventually go out to Tustin. But SSC does not house educational programs and will not in the future. That's not part of our plan.
Okay, awesome, thank you so much. Let's see, I have a couple other notes here. One of the other things I was, kind of stuck out to me is that we wanted to have this lease out for seventy-five years and then possible extension for another twenty-five. I was just curious, this lease would outlive, I would assume, most people in this room, and I was just curious what the thought process was on that versus potentially reviewing if this is a program that we want on our campus or how, how things are going generally.
I think the thought process on that is if we're going to have a tenant come in and outlay the amount of money that is going to be necessary to bring it up to code, then they are going to want a very long-term lease. So the seventy-five years with the twenty-four year option for renewal, that's, the ninety-nine years is the maximum that's allowed within education code, and so that was kind of why we did it. We structured some of this after what we're doing with our ATEP tenants. So many of those ground leases are seventy-five years with a twenty-four year option for renewal.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, I have a couple other ones here. Oh, when, when are the clause, the out clauses, are they figured out after the bid or before the bid? My concern is, you know, it's mentioned that high schoolers would be on campus, but this appears to be in the wording here that it would be six through twelve. And so the concern might be that middle school students are on campus, and I teach middle school students. I know how rambunctious they can be and could be potential conflict levels at some, some point. I remember vividly a student running away from campus once. It was not a fun time. Everyone was, you know, not having a good time with that. So I just wanted to know when those out clauses are written? Is that before the bid, after the bid? What do those look like?
It's after the bid, so once, once we go to bid and get interested bidders, then we'll have the ground lease, and then the ground lease would be negotiated before we would award it to the board, or award it, take it to the board for award.
Okay, awesome, thank you so much. I think that's all I have, so thank you for your responses.
Okay. Okay, trustee Prendergast.
I just want to be clear, just to make sure it's in everybody's head, we're basing a lot of these questions and assumptions on one person getting the bid because only one has come to us. We could have twenty people or twenty entities put out a bid, and then all these questions are moot. So just be aware.
But we're also getting into something to prospectively into lease terms, and we're not there yet.
Yeah.
So, I mean, there's good questions, but a lot of them relate to actually the actual terms of the lease, and we're not yet in a landlord-tenant agreement.
Right. So I just, just make sure that we're, we're not getting too far ahead of ourselves in, in who the tenant is when we, I mean, it could be, it could be an automotive group that wants to use the old automotive aspect of task. So we really don't know what, what's coming, so.
We don't. Well, I'd add to that, the resolution says it's going to be for a six through twelve, so it has to be a school. I don't, it could be a private school, it could be a charter school, it could be a public school, but it does have to be a school.
Okay. I mean, then that does matter.
Yeah, true. But again, I mean, good questions, but we're not yet in a lease negotiation. We're moving possibly towards that, but we're not there yet.
So then that begs the question, would we not put it out to bid to anyone to lease? It has to be a school?
Yes. So this resolution that we brought forward to the board is narrowing the pool of, I would say, potential bidders for a grade six through twelve entity. And the reason being is because we felt that if we're going to lease something on our campus that is so integrally, part of the campus, that we wanted to have some synergy with whoever was leasing there. And I think that was what Dr. Stern was talking about, was the synergy that he feels would be created with the high school students if they were here, and then those high school students taking some of our college courses.
Okay, so I misunderstood the, the part where we were modeling a little bit after ATEP, because in ATEP, it could be a private partnership. It could be, like I said, it could be an automotive group that wants to use the.
It's a narrow list of possible tenants.
So that, that does change my view of it, but that's okay.
Okay. The chancellor wanted to make a comment.
Okay, I, I appreciate all the questions, and obviously there's a lot of interest in this. So I just, I think trustee Prendergast, you, you mentioned this. So remember, tonight, we're approving the intention to lease the property, and so we will, we will go out to bid. And I, I know that there's a lot of discussion right now about this, the, the grade level, the six through twelve, but I also want to be sure to point out that when we do go out to bid and when we're looking for leaseurs, we're looking for individuals that fit with the vision, mission, and values and outcomes that we're trying to achieve at the colleges. And I want to also share, related to that, is that the new Vision 2030 that is likely to be approved soon by the Board of Governors for the State of California has as one of its primary goals dual enrollment. And the new state chancellor has in her vision, and it's a shared vision across the state, to expand dual enrollment to middle school. So we will already be seeing middle school students on our campuses, and we'll have to work through the implications and the policies and the administrative regulations related to that. And we already have some, I think, ninth grade students on our, on our campuses. And the other thing, I think, just to, to point out, and again, we're just talking tonight about approving the intention to lease. We're not approving, we're not looking at the bids, we're just approving the intention to lease, but since we had these discussions, just want to point this out. I think for our colleges to remain responsive to our community, we already know that our high school population is going to be continuing to decrease. In Orange County, it's, it's even worse because of the, of the, of the property. So we're not seeing high school age students coming our way. We just met with one of the superintendents, for example, I think at Capo, who talked about just the declining rates. And, and you know this because you're, you're in the K through twelve as well. And so here is a possible opportunity in the future to have, to be innovative, and I know quite a few California community colleges, I just chaired an accreditation visit where they have a high school campus on their campus, and it provides rich opportunities for both the high school students and the, and the college. And it provides a lot of dual enrollment for those, for those students, and it helps us as well with our, with our enrollment. Many of those students, I think our board likes this piece of it, many of those students do take two years of community college, and when they graduate from high schools, high school, they already have their associate degree. And so for me, when we get to that point, I know we're not at that point tonight, but when we get to that point, having a high school, campus, a high school on campus does align with our vision, mission, and values, and it aligns with the direction that the state is moving in.
So, anybody have any questions? Yeah. Given, excuse me, if we approve this, so in the sealed bid, if we've got, if we get a, in the, a bid, I guess, for nine through twelve, for example, would that be acceptable under the parameters under which we're, might be approving this?
Yes.
Okay. It's, okay. Thank you.
Okay, I have another question. This is really serious, so I'm taking the time to, to discuss this. President Stern, you said that you came from a campus who had a high school there, and the chancellor just mentioned that she visited a campus. Can we have more information on this? This is a heavy decision. I understand that it's approving the intent, but I think we need more information. I want to know from other campuses what, how they answered some of trustee, of our trustees, the questions tonight. How did they deal with that? Personally, to have anyone under grade nine on campus, I don't think that's safe. I don't think that's good. While we're talking, I'm thinking, why don't we make ATAS, the old days' task, into an emergency housing? You know, for people who need housing now, we could think about it. We, we can't get the money to build housing, let's try the housing here. It's not going to be like we want it, but I want to meet the needs of the students. So personally, I couldn't approve this tonight because I don't have enough information, and I just think it's huge. I, I want to know how many, how many colleges, the hundred and sixteen of those, how many have this type of sharing? It's huge. That's my point.
To that, to that end, there's, there's not a timeline crunch on this at all, is there?
I'll look to Dr. Stern for that one.
We don't have, we don't have a great timeline crunch, but I think we need to figure out where this sits in our facilities master plan and what we do next. To trustee Rydell's point about housing, I, I don't think the shell of this building of renovated is practical for housing because it's partly single-story and partly two-story, and even a good reconfiguration wouldn't give us enough housing, but I, I love the idea and the brainstorming. But to that point, we have a whole bunch of projects and a whole bunch of things that we need to do, and if we're going to need to renovate this building to make use of it, that fits into the facilities master plan in a way that's different than if we lease it out. And we are at somewhat of an inflection point with our discussion of housing coming up. So I would say it's something we would want to see decided this year, but I, I don't think we need to make a decision tonight if you don't feel ready to make a decision.
Yeah, so I'm going to, I'm going to make a motion to postpone this item to the next meeting to give staff opportunity to respond to some of the questions and reach out to some of those institutions to get those answers to us. So I'm making that motion.
I second it.
Okay, so we have a motion to postpone action on.
Ten point one.
Excuse me, ten.
Ten point one, to the next meeting.
To, to the next regular board meeting, which would be October, forget the date.
There is already a motion on the floor, so are we, are you pulling that, the original motion?
Who's the original motion?
The original motion was to approve.
No, but who made the original?
You.
So I can, I can change my motion then.
Right, so that, I was just clarifying, you're changing your motion.
So I'm changing the motion.
Well, the second is trustee Milchek.
So we have a motion from trustee Prendergast, second from trustee Milchek, to postpone consideration of this item until the next regular board meeting, and I would suggest that we provide staff, our administration and staff, our comments, so that when it's brought forward, you know, some of our questions are addressed beforehand.
And I would recommend if anybody thinks of any other questions, that they forward it to the chancellor, to then forward to staff.
So I think the one question that now is, is in my mind, and we've talked about, you know, probably it's time to move on, but is that if there is a certain lessee that's interested, they're going to bid even if this scope is broadened a bit. So that, the way the intention to lease is written now, it's, it's very narrow. Yes, we have not engaged in any kind of a lease landlord-tenant agreement yet, but if this, the way it's written, I think it's trustee Dak, you know, pointed out, I mean, it's written prescriptively, and if it's written a little more broadly, I don't think that is any way discouraging of a prospective tenant who might be a six through twelve charter school. Did you believe that to be the case? I mean, but.
Potentially.
If there are other bidders, then that would be great, but we don't think that's going to happen. It might.
I have one other question. Do you finish?
Yeah, I'm not, if we, if we made it less narrow, it obviously wouldn't, I would say, discourage the entities that are interested that fit that definition now. It potentially could, but I, I don't know that it would. But then it, it could also bring in prospective bidders that wouldn't meet the vision, mission, and goals of the college and the synergy that the college is looking for in something like this.
Sure, but that, we have the right to not accept certain bids based on the criteria we set forth.
Correct.
So we still have a position to determine if, you know, a prospective tenant is in alignment with our values and our mission and our programs and.
Right.
We don't relinquish that control.
Understood. But if the high bidder is an entity that does not fit with the mission values of the district, then we have managed to not use the bidding process in a way, in an out, to create an outcome that we would like, meaning to have an entity that does synergize with our mission values. By broadening it out, trustee Jamal, I'm concerned about opening it up to a high bid that may not fit the mission and values.
But we, we frequently, I mean, not, well, I think, I've been on the board ten years, I've seen a lot of bids rejected that have been the highest bid of vendors.
Yeah, we don't automatically go with the high bid, we go with what fits our institution.
Well, it, it depends on what it is. So if it's services, you know, services were not required to award to the highest bid. You're, you're required to award to the best fit. If it's for, you know, construction contracts, that type of thing, you are required to award to the lowest bidder unless they're deemed non-responsive or non-responsible. You know, so, I mean, the, the public contract code and the government code and the education code, all of them combined are very prescriptive on who you can award any bid to. In this instance, it does say that we're required to award to the highest bidder. Now, the district always has the option to reject all bids, so that would be an option. But if the highest bidder met all of the, the guidelines that were laid out in the bid, our choice would be to either award it or reject all bids. So those are the only, we wouldn't have the choice to go to the next highest bidder unless we deemed them non-responsive or, or non-responsible. You know, let's say that we felt that they didn't have the financial means to do the project.
So can you not put in the bid process that you have to, that, that is part of the criteria for being a. for being an acceptable bid? You have to meet these mission? I mean, it seems like an easy fix to me because, yeah, you're the highest bidder, but you don't meet the criteria, your bid's disqualified.
That's something that we're going to have to consult with our attorney on. I mean, we did, the wording that's in the resolution tonight was really prescribed, prescribed by our attorney. So to change this wording, any wording that we would want to change, we would need to run it back through our legal counsel to see, to make sure that we are still in compliance with the bidding guidelines as established by code.
But...
The one thing I, I was going to ask was, you said next meeting. Can we just say future meeting? Because I'm not sure that we'll be able to get all the answers...
That's true.
Sufficiently for the next board meeting.
Your motion?
Yeah, that's fine. Amend it to future meeting. And, and I get, I mean, I, I get what you're saying and, and, but at the same time, when you approached legal, you said, this is what we would like to see in the bid. Now you're hearing a desire from at least a couple of board members. Open it up. So they can come up with that wording, I'm sure. But, but yeah, I, I, I think, I think that's a very excellent point, Dr. Stern, and I think we can fix that. I think we can make it part of the criteria that you have to fit the mission statement of the college and the, and the, and the, and the district as part of the bid qualification. And then even if they're the highest bidder, but they don't meet the criteria, they're disqualified. And we don't have to turn them down. They turn themselves down. So I, I, I think it's a great thing that we hold bidders accountable to the mission of, of the institutions. I mean, and, and in that point, like you said, doesn't have to necessarily be a six through 12 if it meets those criteria. And it would still benefit everyone involved.
Okay, so we now have a, I don't know, I think, did you have something else?
I just wanted to know.
Put it on your mic.
One of my constituents said to me, do we need the revenue to operate?
That's for Dr. Stern and for...
I'm sorry, trustee Rydel, what was the, the constituent's statement?
We need their revenue to operate.
Do we need, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm still not hearing you.
Do we need, sorry, can I?
Yeah.
I, I think what she's asking for is, do we, the district of the college, need this type of lease agreement to successfully operate going forward?
No, but we're always looking for ways to grow enrollment to better serve our community and to better serve students, particularly ensuring that students go on to college and, and transform their lives through the power of education. That is core and central to our mission, and we're always looking to do more of that, not less. Also, as chancellor Barnes pointed out, you know, we as a district face an insidious decline in our ability to fulfill our mission if we are not always looking for new ways to find more lives that we can transform.
Yeah, I, I heard that loud, and that's important to me. But I just think, um, I'd like to have more of the questions answered. I'd like to know what other people are doing. I don't want to be the person in the forefront who falls on their face. And I, with the people here and the people that we have in administration, I don't think that would happen, but it's scary. It really is. We're not going to be here in 75 years. All of you know that. And, um, I don't know, I just, I think we're setting the pace, and it has to be, I think it needs to be better thought.
Okay, so with, with that, we do have a motion that's on the table that would postpone consideration of this item to a future board meeting. And also I encourage all the board members and public that are here to, to provide input on this issue before we bring it back. So let's go ahead and vote on the item. Oh, I think we have to vote to postpone.
Yeah, this is the vote, I think.
Yeah. We have a motion and a second to postpone consideration. This item.
To a future meeting when information's...
Okay.
I have one question, but I'll turn it in.
Okay, we'll ask it before we vote.
The question is, I, I, I'm sure this is the case, but I just want to make sure that we check into it that leasing the building doesn't count against our ratio of classroom buildings that we're allowed to have funded on, on our community college, on Saddleback College for leasing the building up. I'm pretty sure that's the case, but I want to make sure that we look into that, okay? Thank you.
So, can we get this, it's, it's change, if we vote on this, we're, we're voting to approve it. Oh, there it is. It's at the bottom.
Okay.
Thank you.
I was going to ask whether we even needed to vote to postpone. Do we need to act on it? But, okay.
It's at the very, very bottom.
We could have just pulled the item. I think, I think the sentiment of the board is they want to consider this with the new guidance.
Just some of the board members want more information. Yeah, it's okay.
Okay, everyone, please vote.
I did already.
Okay, so 10.1, uh, the item 10.1 has been voted on, on a six to zero trustee yes vote, with the student trustee yes vote, to postpone consideration of this item until a future board meeting. Moving on, 10.2, IVC Second Year Sub Award Agreement with Concordia University.
So move.
Motion for trustee Milchikar. Second from trustee Rydel. Any questions? Let's go ahead and vote. Uh, motion carries, six to zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. 10.3, Saddleback College Grant Award for the California Apprenticeship Initiative. Is there a motion and a second?
I so move, but I have a question, one question.
Motion from trustee Milchikar. Can we have a second? Second from trustee Unman, question trustee Milchikar.
I think it's great we're getting this grant, but what is the mechanics, Mechatronics Technician Apprenticeship Program? Could, could you just explain it to me very quickly?
I, I hope. So mechatronics is a fairly new field. It is the support of technology that is both mechanical and electrical. So for instance, supporting robotics technicians that actually support robots and robotic machinery in factories is a big part of mechatronics. Uh, so this is a plan to build experiential learning, so workplace learning in this field in combination with classes. So partly didactic, partly experiential learning on the job in a fairly new field and a fairly new way of delivery. So again, um, an innovative opportunity to expand our reach and deliver a new kind of training in a new field.
I think it's great. It's, it's, we're getting a grant to do this, and it's also an apprenticeship program. So our students get work, workplace, um, training as well as classroom training. So I think, I think it's great. Now that I know what it is, I feel better about it. Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Let's go ahead and vote on the item. Motion carries, six to zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. 10.4, Saddleback College Grant Award Supplement NSF Alliances STEM Core Expansion. Is there a motion?
So move.
Motion trustee Milchikar.
Second. Yay.
Trustee Hitty, is that you? Okay, second trustee Hitty. Any questions or comments? Okay, let's vote. Motion carries on a six to zero trustee yes vote, student trustee yes vote. And I should say, congratulations, Saddleback. Nice, nice grant. All right, 11.1, I always wondered, like, the title of this, this item, like, it just seems long. 10 years on the board, Academic Employees and Academic Classified Administrator/Manager Personnel Actions, Ratifications, Regular Items. I mean, do we have to have that name to it?
I can certainly look into it.
All right, any updates?
There are no changes, thank you.
Okay, I'll move, move approval of this item.
Motion from trustee Milchikar.
I second.
I was looking at you.
Good job.
A second from, uh, it's an, can she, she can't second it though?
No, she's allowed to second.
No, no, but it's an HR item.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, that's right. Okay, sorry. Second from trustee Prendergast. Any questions? Okay, let's go ahead and vote. The motion carries on a six to zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee abstention. 11.2, Classified Personnel Actions, Ratifications.
No changes.
No changes to the item. Is there a motion to approve?
I move approval of this item.
Motion trustee Milchikar. Is there a second? Looking to my left, we need a second. Second from trustee Rydel. Any questions? Okay, let's vote on the item. The motion carries on a six to zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee abstention. The last human resource item is the employment agreement with our chancellor, Dr. Juliana Barnes.
And I do have a readout. So this position is for the position of chancellor, Dr. Juliana Barnes. Contract date's July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2027. Range one, step one, annual salary $390,000. Thank you.
Okay.
I move approval of this item.
Hi, second. Okay, we have a motion from trustee Milchikar and a second from trustee Dack. Any questions on the item? No, all right, let's go ahead and vote. Motion carries on a six to zero trustee yes vote and student trustee abstention. Congratulations. All right, now, we have no educational and technology services items. Thank you. You're on a roll. All right, you're doing a great job though. So information items, 13.1, Staff Response to Public Comments from Previous Board Meeting. Does he have a question? 13.2, Saddleback College and IVC Speakers. 2024 Teachers of the Year Recognition Ceremony. What's the date of that again?
November the 6th.
November 6th, okay. It's all planned to go to that if we can. What's that?
It's a Monday night, usually on a Friday.
It is, I, I probably, yeah.
Better traffic, it'll be better.
Could be. 13.4, Facilities Plan Status Report. 13.5, Monthly Financial Status Report. And 13.6, Retiree OPEB Trust Fund. Seeing no questions, we'll now move on to our reports from the administration and governance, or the administration, I should say, chancellor Barnes.
Thank you, thank you. Well, good evening. I do have a few congratulatory remarks to share tonight. So first, I want to congratulate IVC for once again being named a great college to work for for a second year in a row. I'm sure President Hernandez, you're going to say more about that. But I think obviously we all know that our workplace is like a home away from home. So the fact that you were able to work with your constituents to create this wonderful working environment for all is, is a wonderful accomplishment. So congrats to President Hernandez and all the folks, folks from IVC. Second, I want to congratulate Dr. Elliot Stern for receiving a prestigious national honor and being named the National Council for Marketing and Public Relations, NCMPR Pace Setter of the Year. This is actually a big recognition given to community college chief executive officers who have demonstrated special leadership in support of college communications and marketing. Elliot is the only award winner among community colleges in Arizona, California, Nevada, Utah, Micronesia, Palau, Marshall Islands, and Guam. So congratulations, President Stern. It's a big, it's a, it's a big, big, big award, as our, our PIO knows. So finally, speaking of awards and communication, hopefully everyone has been able to dig into the new award-winning Wall Literary Journal produced by Saddleback College under the direction of faculty member Dr. Gina Victoria Schaefer. I had the chance to read a handful of the pieces thus far, the latest of which is from our very own student trustee Caitlin Hitty. Um, she wrote a fabulous heartfelt piece entitled "Less Than" in which she shares her story as a twin sister and the feeling she had about living in her twin's shadow. And you'll have to read more about it yourself, but it continues with how she finds her own voice and her own passion and her own life path. And so Caitlin, congratulations for being published and thanks for sharing your story. And that concludes my report.
I know what I'm reading this weekend. All right. We're now on to, let's go Elliot Stern, Saddleback College.
Thank you very much. Not much to add to my written report. Uh, I will say, we always invite the trustees and appreciate their attendance of any athletic events. Uh, and I know we can probably count on you being at some football events, but I also want to call your attention to, to other important sports playing in the stadium this year. Both men's soccer, our new inaugural soccer team invite you to those events. With Little Fan Fair and a starting squad of between 50 and 60 young men, they are already posting a winning record, which was very surprising for a new team being built. We're very proud of that and hope you will come see them. Um, but I have to really draw your attention to our women's soccer team. This, last year's state champions and national champions are so far touting a 5-0 record between preseason and the game that I was lucky enough to see on Friday where they shut out Cerritos 7 to nothing. Four of the last five games have been shutouts. This team, we never know what's going to happen. We never want to jinx anything. Injuries happen, but my goodness, they look like they're heading for another state championship and another potential national championship. So we're very proud of them, and we really would invite you to come see huge wins in the stadium every time they play. They're really fun to watch. Uh, I also want to shout out to both our Associated Student Government and our Student Development Office for creating so many activities on our campus in the first few weeks that it's now spilled over. And the students that were out on the quad attending activities in the first couple of weeks are now out on the quad because they've discovered the quad and they've discovered activities. Uh, so I want to shout out to them and thank them for the rich, robust university experience that they are providing our students. And finally, I want to thank tonight, Micronesia, for not putting up any tough competition for me in the Pace Setter War. Thank you very much, that's it for me.
Good one. All right, IVC president, John Hernandez.
Thank you, trustee Jamal. I want to thank the board for approving item 10.2. It's the Grant Renewal for the Second Year Funding for the Californians for All College Core Program. We have started our second cohort. This is an incredible program where students are able to make an impact in their local communities and receive a $10,000 educational and living stipend, which, as you know, often we promote community engagement, but it's very difficult for students to do that when they have other socioeconomic needs. And, uh, as many of you know, last year we had 67 fellows complete over 16,000 hours of community service at one of about 10 different community agencies focusing around K-12, climate action, and food insecurity. And so we are really looking forward to the second year cohort. And then the other item I wanted to highlight, thank you chancellor Barnes, I wasn't going to speak about, um, the great college to work for, but we're very pleased with the results of this year's announcement as well, is in the report, I shared that IVC now is a participating college in the Amazon Career Choice Program. That is not something you apply for. As I understand, Amazon approaches institutions to participate in this. The only other community college in the Southern California region, at least, is Shafie College in the Inland Empire. And this provides an opportunity for employees of Amazon to continue their profession, educational, um, opportunities at local colleges. They receive, uh, you know, tuition remission, textbooks, and those kinds of things. So, um, there's a lot of folks that had to really partner to do this, and I'm down to 10 seconds and can't think them all. But particularly Dean Tracy Fahimi, who started the conversation. And just, uh, thank you to all those that participated in making it happen. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Vice chancellor of Educational and Technology Services, Chris McDonald. Thank you for that. Vice chancellor of Human Resources.
I have no report at this time.
Okay, thank you for that. Vice chancellor of Business Services.
I just want to thank the board for giving our wonderful chancellor a new four-year contract.
On that positive note, we are at the end of our meeting. Have a good night.